I would like to welcome you to the August 19, 2014 Planning Board meeting for the Village of New Paltz. My name is Maurice Whitehead, I'm the chair. Our other members present tonight are Rich Steffens, Liz Harsho, Jared Litten, Michael Zerler is away this week, our attorney is George Rodenhasen, our secretary is Brogan Rose Odor, and in the audience we have our planning director, among other things, Brendan Smith. We have an agenda with a few items, the first is a proposed lot line revision for 66 Church Street. Have we spoken with this fellow?
They never showed up, but I called and reminded them.
I thought we agreed the last meeting.
Yeah, I thought so, yeah, sorry. The next item is PD 1405, which is proposal to construct a cinema called Water Street Cinema in the Water Street Market. And tonight's meeting will be a determination of completeness, and then they have a ZDA referral, and a discussion for a local law amendment, and adoption notes and draft minutes. So I will ask if applicant Bruce Stevens is here for PD 1404. That will be the last time we will mention his name until he comes in and gives something nice to us. Okay. Mr. James, I see you, come on up. Mr. James is the architect, is that correct?
Well, I'm the engineer.
Engineer.
Engineer, and the architect is Anthony Capone.
That's right, I remember. Okay. Water Street Cinema.
My revisions since the last meeting include showing landscaping, lighting, and addressing drainage. Mr. Howard Sacher provided, specifically on the parking, provided a parking study. Essentially, those are the bullet points of the revision. Getting into a little more detail on the landscaping and lighting. Essentially, we propose to have some landscaping along the front, sort of planting bed, probably annual flowers.
Correct.
Annual flowers.
I meant the new one.
Along the sidewalk, and then on the east side of the building.
Like front you mean between the parking lot and the entrance?
Yeah, yeah, we'll have a concrete sidewalk, we'll have the parking, a concrete sidewalk, then planters up against the building. And then on the east side, planting basically some pampas grass along that side. I do have some utilities in there, I don't want to put any sort of woody plants in the lawn area. And essentially, that would be the limit of the landscaping. Lighting would be on the building itself, on the side facing the parking lot, and not on the other three sides. Essentially, downward pointing, cut off moving areas at the entrances, two entrances, and then at the one poster on the left-hand side, and then two over the marquee, for a total of five lights. There's also site, existing site lighting from the prior project out there.
Do we have information for that?
Yes, that would be on the second sheet. Oh, the existing lighting?
Yes.
If you look on the site plan, there's a, I don't have them led in, but you can see this symbol, that's the existing lighting.
Okay.
I probably should have brought that to your attention.
And is that subject to change?
No.
They're already changing it, so?
No.
So we don't have anything to say about that, right? And I would like you to go all the way through and then ask questions, but I don't see anything about the landscaping to the front here on the second page, which I assume is the one we're talking about. I see the pampas grass.
Yeah, essentially, there's a note in the, if you look in the parking lot.
I see, okay.
And then you'll see a note over in the upper right-hand corner with the landscaping on the front.
Sorry, yes, I see it, okay, great. P U A, P U A? I think it's P A M, but that's, I think it's P A M, P A S. I think it's a Spanish word.
From the pampas.
Los pampas. Pampas is while we're arguing about these.
You know what happened here, this is a spell check.
Oh yeah, right, that's great.
That's a spell check.
Your lucky is just that. I've seen many worse. Someone's going to invent the spell check, spell checks. Okay, go ahead, I'm sorry. So you explained the lighting and the landscaping.
On drainage?
Yes, let's do drainage.
We're essentially taking care of the roof. The additional, that would be caused by the roof, as opposed to what's there now, which is paved gravel, kind of a rock surface. So the increase in runoff, we're handling gutter drains into two tanks. The first tank would be a water quality tank, which would essentially be a detention tank and stay full all the time. And then coming out of that tank and into a detention tank, which would cut off the peak flow, essentially would be empty most of the time, in other words, this time of the year, the time would be empty. Fills up when we have a storm. And then we run it into an existing line that was part of the original project down in the southeast corner of the site. And then into a pipe that runs into the creek, into the stream that's down below the property.
Is that what it's called, existing trench drain?
Yeah, that was the existing trench drain
Trench drain.
From the prior project. And you'll see the dashed, existing catch basins, that's the existing system. So I'm bypassing the existing system and coming into the line at the outlet of that that tank that was put in on the first project.
So that's essentially a flat roof sloping slightly?
Yeah. I've actually got gutter drains on both sides, so it could actually be crowned in the middle, if it's easier to do it that way, or we could bring it all to one side, doesn't matter.
How high would the crown be, a couple of feet?
Oh no. No, I mean, you're only talking about halfway, it's 22 feet, maybe three inches.
Okay.
You know, just enough to shut the water off.
So do you think there's going to be any effect of it draining over into the existing retail space on that one side? Where the fountain is?
Yeah, I mean, if we didn't either pitch the whole roof one way, or have a mono pitch, or break it, and then catch it in gutter leaders and bring it around, we would be shutting it down, down on that space. And again, it's probably not that much of an increase because it's already kind of a paved rock gravel surface back there.
I should be able to understand this better than I do, but you said that there was a water quality basin and then a detention basin?
Right.
And the water quality basin would be full all the time?
All the time, right.
And then when that's added to the runoff from that, we'll go into the detention basin?
Correct.
And how does that drain, is that from the bottom or?
Yeah, there's a small orifice in the bottom that would drain it dry.
So there shouldn't be any sediment?
The sediment should all get trapped in the water quality tank. Probably won't be a lot coming off the roof anyway.
Right.
But of course, everything needs maintenance.
Yeah, it's right here. Yeah, okay, sorry. Okay, so we put the lighting and the landscaping and the drainage. And this parking, what do we have to do? I wanted to ask something about the drainage. This is different from the plan, from the original plan that you had for Howard's proposal, correct?
Right. In that proposal, we were running the drainage out to Main Street.
Yes.
And we did a study of the drainage along Main Street that runs down into the wall hill. And at the time, I thought that we had a plan, kind of that was, you know, that we worked out with Dave Clauser that, you know, was acceptable. And then other things came into play, you know, besides the drainage. It's easier in this proposal to bring it, the way I'm bringing it, essentially, this property does drain into Water Street.
Yes.
Okay. It's just that I'm taking this now and putting it kind of in another area, rather than having it come down into where the fountain is, down into the retail space and into the pathways. I think it's a better fix.
So the square footage of the roof is going to be something like 300?
No. No, it's about 24, 2500.
I'm sorry, of course. It's 44 by 62?
Right.
But anyhow, okay. And so the basins are engineered for that much water?
Yes. In a 25-year storm?
Just out of curiosity.
Which happens every couple of years.
Every couple of years, right.
Could happen every year. It's a 4% chance that it happens every year.
When the wall hill floods and that creek begins to back up and the water rises, will that cause a backup through the retention tanks, the detention tank? The backup to system?
No, we probably got about a 40-foot drop, or a height difference.
Yeah, okay.
Could it determine 25-year storm, is it National Weather Service or?
It's, they're established numbers, Soil Water Conservation. No, well, it's US, I think it's part of USDA. And they've done it over a number of years to establish what, how many inches of rain in 24 hours is a 25-year storm. Like for instance, this area, I believe it's six and a half inches in 24 hours is a 25-year storm. 100-year storm would be about eight inches in 24 hours, so it's all based on 24-hour storms.
And that comes from USDA? Ultimate?
Ultimate, yes. We just had that storm in low amount, quite a low amount, and it was 13 inches in two hours. There's no systems that are designed
For 500-year storms.
That is the millennial storm, if you ask that that way. That is the probable maximum flood, that's the Noah flood.
How long can you turn order?
Thank you, Bill Cosby.
Okay. Sorry. So are we up to parking, or is there more you want to talk about drainage? Or anything?
No.
Not on drainage, I have other questions.
I mean, I started reading the parking studies.
Sorry?
I started reading the parking study, but we got a whole discussion on that.
I think so.
But as far as our application complete, is that what we're just?
No, not yet, I would like him to take us through this parking study, or public analysis. Yes, all right.
We've got 71 spaces shown on the site plan for Water Street Market. The parking required by the Village Code is one space for every six seats. 96 seats divided by six is 16 spaces. Most of these calculations are done based on evening hours, where what would be available for spaces would be the 71, and we're subtracting 25 spaces for Bridge Creek Cafe and the Jarred Wine Pub combined, 25 spaces, leaving us 46 spaces. And even if you consider two people per car, that would be enough essentially for full occupancy of the theater. There probably would be times when there are businesses that are open and there's perhaps a matinee, so that perhaps the parking lot's full when there's a matinee happening. I mean, there's, according to the study, there's about 200 spaces in the Village, you know, in like a five-minute walking distance to the project, so I could see at times having to have people walk to it. But I think essentially for evening viewing, for evening shows, I think there's ample onsite parking.
Okay, so as of now, the only two businesses in the market that have night hours are Jarred and Bridge Creek. Okay. Anything else for us, Brendan? Plan of pages is a good summary, brief?
It's brief.
To the fine. Mr. Steffens?
They also do run a lot of outdoor events, music events, theater events. People get to them somehow, too. So there are other things that occur down there that they're going to need a parking. Now unless they're going to not schedule outdoor events when there's theater events.
Well, we hope there'll be a theater event most evenings. And I would imagine there will be times where the dust comes like, when it's overbooked. That's the nature of almost any parking scenario, I would imagine.
I mean, they may become more and more complicated, those outdoor events down there.
I would say that's a possibility, you know.
How often do they?
I don't know, you know, I
We have a Thursday event every week of a music event. There's that Monday summertime outdoor theater event, I don't know whether he'll continue that once he has the theater or not.
Perhaps not, I don't know, or he changes views on that stuff.
The other question, of course, is does he have a permit to outdoor music events?
That's not our question this evening.
Well, yeah. It may limit how many events he can have down there.
Right.
I don't have enough information on that.
Okay. Any other questions? Liz?
I have two questions. One pertains to the theater building itself, and I'm not sure, it probably should be directed at the architect. Is, almost every theater I've ever been in has an entrance and then has exits all the way down where the screen is. And if three sides of this building are in the rock, how do you have rear exits? You know, the emergency fire exit thingy.
Right. I assume there are safety codes that have to be, fire codes have to be, have to be done with, I don't know that that's our
If the building code demands it, the logical place for it would be on the west side with a catwalk.
Brendan, have we gotten anything from our building inspectors about?
On this one, no. But keep in mind that just because the planning board approves something doesn't mean that it
Oh, of course.
Needs code.
But it would be good to get it fleshed out before we have anything, so perhaps by the public hearing, which could be in two weeks, it'd be good to have a timely report from them about the whole thing, not just
And yeah, my other question is, even though this is owned, these two properties are owned by the same person, the building is being built on one property, but yet the drainage and the utilities for the drainage are on the adjoining property. Do we, as the planning board, need to worry about making sure that easements are done? Or I see by George's comments that a lot line revision is not required. So it could then be done with easement since it is two different parcels of land?
If he doesn't do lot line revision, aren't they going to need a lifelong lease on parking places also?
Well, he mentions that they're going to have agreement between the two corporations, the two residential company that that will provide for the lease essentially. And I think it is
And that it would cover the utility?
Basically, the easement, the easement for the parking, for use of the trash facilities, and it should cover the drainage as well.
Okay.
Yeah, and I think it's in the planning board's area of responsibility to make sure that happens.
Yes.
And then we see it as all like
Yeah, I think your question, easement, which is parking and and areas for the dumpsters. And that should be extended.
Exist the drainage, good point about drainage.
And I have no other questions, those, he already, the other question I had already had been answered by someone else's question.
Mr. Litten?
No.
Mr. Litten, the only question I could board is whether you want to have Dave Clauser agree to the drainage.
I was going to talk about, I think it's a good idea. And I don't know who's around now, I think he might be back from his Yeah, but he has associates, and I can speak with him anyhow. But I think it would be good to get his feedback at the next meeting, I hope we can do it. Okay, are there any other things, Brendan, that you think should keep us from completing? Okay, may I have a motion to determine that the application is complete?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Thank you, John. Who in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Now, can we have a motion to refer this to the county? And let's see when this
It actually went
It went to the county.
It was already referred last meeting, but it didn't make it on the September
It shouldn't have gone to the county without
It made a motion in the last meeting to bring it to the county.
With the corrected drawings, with the additional drawings?
You said if they brought the corrected drawings
Okay, all right, that's good, so we submitted the updated drawings.
But because they needed to be on Friday, and then I emailed, sent them on Wednesday, they didn't get them in time.
So they didn't get there for which, you see, meeting?
They'll be on the October agenda. No, they'll be on the September agenda.
They'll be on the September agenda, right, which is the earliest it would have been anyhow.
It could have been in August.
No. Oh, I saw what you're saying, if they came in, no, 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 because it came in, the plans came in August 12th. So it couldn't have been August, because the August meeting was August, I don't know, 5th or something like that. Anyhow, it doesn't matter. What matters is that the Austin County Planning Board will meet next. And I'll tell you that in a minute, just in case I have a calendar.
First Wednesday?
It's the first Wednesday of September, which I think is the third. And that's after our planning board meeting, so we'll have to have a public hearing on on September That's why. So September 2nd, so it would be the September 16th meeting, which will give us a couple of weeks to receive their recommendations. So, may I have a motion to schedule a public hearing for our September 16th meeting?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Who in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Now this will be subject to, should have made that motion, but it'll be subject to, I guess we can have it even though we don't get it, yeah.
Okay.
All right. Okay. So do we need anything else?
So will there be recommendations that come back from the Austin County Planning Board in time for our
Yes. Yes, it usually takes a week after the meeting, so we'll have two weeks. And it should be okay, and I will make sure that it happens. So I will speak with Mr. Clauser or his designated meeting tomorrow, and I'll find out what his schedule is. And when will Harry be back? Or when is he going to be back?
I think it's, it just has a one-day thing going on.
Right, okay. All right, so I can speak to Harry tomorrow to make sure that we find out how much money the base wants to cost, and adjust the F1s and so on.
Do I need to provide additional copies for Dave?
I think, did you supply ten? All right, thank you, Bob.
Thank you.
Okay.
Maurice, do you think that the gentleman that was in here earlier could possibly be the applicant?
It is.
Okay.
Oh, the screaming kids is
Yeah. Is the 66 Church Street?
Come on in. Yep. I'm trying to get my wife here, but we're moving the lot line. Yes, yeah. Yeah. All right. Hey, guys. I did not bring my stuff, Mr. Stephen. I don't have anything. Yeah. You should have childcare. I guessed that for a pre-application meeting. So do we have any paperwork in this package, or is
Yeah, I don't think so, I think it was just basically an informational request. We just want to check the feasibility, you know, of doing a lot line revision for the six subdivision. It's a .2 acre lot, and the zoning, I think, you know, is permissible to do .10, you know, lots. There's an existing structure on the property, which is the lactated barn, which we got in on this, you know, for repair. So the owner wants to do a build-out, basically, you know, potentially tear down the existing structure, rebuild it for height efficient dwelling for, you know, single-family residential use. So we would probably, being that it's pre-existing, non-conforming, would need some type of zoning, you know, approval for that. So that's kind of the scope of the work, and what we're going to do is divide the lot line, you know, have that barn on its own property, and be able to do a single-family residential, you know, build-out.
Go chase it.
Yeah. So that's kind of the scope of the question, guys.
Before they Before they tumble down the stairs.
I had the one time doing video, the young girl with my wife did not return, which is so awful, and I had to remove the kids to me. Happened to me once.
It's okay.
This one got purr, like 10 minutes before he goes, I'm going to get a chance to change, go get my folder, might please sit down.
It's like that.
So it's 51, not 52?
Correct.
What are the sizes of the subdivision?
It would be .1 with .10 each.
Oh, second one, 10.
There's a couple of problems, I'd say, one is that it creates situations of varying variances, I think on both levels. You don't own all the way You don't own along with the corner, really.
Yeah, that's the town.
But it makes you a corner lot, so setbacks on the new lot are such that it's don't. No, to create a billable lot, it would require CPA. Now, my own say is that we can't create such a lot. We'd have to create a lot that was billable.
Which refers to ZBDA, which granted variance, it becomes billable, doesn't it?
But can we do that after the full path?
No, while spending. Couldn't do final approval until ZBDA grants variance, if that's. If it's gonna take a building there and convert it for, use it. Yeah, you're making a non-conforming lot unless the ZBDA grants variance, so while spending here, if they were to the ZBDA, make an application, then. For the, for the. Then you agree. If they approve the variance, then the lot is conformal.
Yeah, I mean, we're not looking to change the footprint of the building per se, to create a new foundation or anything like that. I mean, obviously, we might expand, we can't really wrap something like that for additional square footage, but, you know, leave the existing footprint, so it's pre-existing. Obviously not conforming to new codes, because it's right on the back lot line, probably the side on seems like that.
If it's going down and re-built, it's still pre-existing.
Well, it's, the, the problem is that it's currently a barn and not a residence.
Yeah, right.
So it'd be a change of use, so tear it down or not.
Right.
So you'd have a real problem with setbacks, correct?
Mm-hmm.
You know, you might make a, you could meet the minimum lotside, but it'd never be the setbacks.
Setbacks, right.
Uh, I didn't realize that this could be done. Get what if we're walls?
What if you move the building?
It's so small, and.
Without purchasing the, the piece from the village.
Even that, the problem is that it's a corner lot where you purchase that piece. The village owning that lot and owning the road makes that barn lot, the corner lot.
Right, true.
So the setbacks become two corners, two front yard setbacks. You don't have a lot life, right? And when I'm talking about small variance here, we're talking about most of the lot.
So it would probably be. In which case they can't go forward.
I mean, you know, two 25-foot setbacks, you know, you have left on a lot that size. Not much, you know.
We certainly can't predict what ZBDA would do. But it seems like, quite a stretch.
Yeah.
We might go talk to them.
Right.
So then we see what.
Put the application, and then we see what they're proposing.
Do they have a pre-application meeting? Do they do a pre-aplication now or?
Yeah, before we go ahead and obviously spend money on something.
Okay. Okay, so that's, that's a start.
So it's more like it is basically.
More like to what?
It's basically not an option, is what we're saying.
That's what it seems like.
Okay. So, so I've, so obviously there's violations on the building currently. So, in terms of that, you know, what's.
What's pre-existing is pre-existing.
Right. So we can rebuild it, pre-existing.
Not for a change of views.
Not for change of views.
You wanna fix up the barn?
Yeah, repair it.
Yeah, repair it. And a barn?
As a barn, as a garage, that's it.
We should speak to the building inspector about that.
Mm-hmm.
They know more about that than we do, or than I do. Okay.
Alright, appreciate it.
Sure.
Thank you.
Let's go, kid, guys.
Come on. Yeah, yeah. Bring that with you. Come on.
Okay, the next item on the agenda. There's someone in the lower area. Mr. Litten?
Yes, sir.
Have a bag and show me how that works.
I haven't had that request since. Wow. I didn't want to go there.
Okay, so what we have here is a ZBDA variance application.
Yes.
For Tenworth Avenue.
Yes.
And it is, it was requested by, I guess, the building inspector?
Yes.
Because he found that the deck was too close to the setback.
Was open setback, a lot of that.
Did you get the rubber stamp for this one?
I did, but I took it off again.
Yeah, please. We have a rubber stamp to say something like, wow, that's a big, that's a big variance. Yes. Right. Remember that? So, as I think Brad and George have said. This is the, the deck that's, the part of the deck that's the problem for the setback is about as far back as the existing structure.
Correct.
So it's not like you're going further than the existing.
Slightly further because of the slant.
Because of the deck.
To slant of the property.
But it's slanted.
Can you straighten that out, then? So, Mr. Seth, Mr. Seth, do you have any, anything to say on this?
I mean, it's backed up to a business zone here, not another residential zone. So I don't think it has as much impact on the neighbor as if this had been a residential zone. There's another barn directly behind them, this is not shown here, so it's not like it's. Right, impacting the commercials barn, I imagine. You know, the fact that John's coming to us after the fact, I think is a result of a poor communication between the building department and his architect. I'll take him, that does the reasonable explanation, knowing when he got these permits.
Did you build the deck?
No, the, the history behind it is that the architect was taking care of, or said she was gonna be taking care of things from the beginning to end, and she had the deck as part of the plans, but did not include them when they were submitted. And so when it was discovered, she said, oh, he requested it later to enter the bus and then presented the plans.
Okay. Got it. Liz? Do you have any questions or comments?
Uh, no, every, everything he just said about how the deck was omitted from the original plans answers my question. Why wasn't it on the original plan?
Okay, so, I don't have anything to add that doesn't echo what others, including George and Brad, have said. So, should we even say anything to ZBDA if you?
If, if you're in favor, I would just say, oh, the resolution in favor of the.
Okay. I have a motion to, tell the ZBDA that we're in favor of granting the variance.
Arrogant.
Thank you. A second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Look, she just squeaks by. You can take the bag off your head now. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next time, get a permit, John, how you doing?
There will not be a next time.
Okay. And we're not gonna do Mr. and Mrs. Glutie's, or Mr. Glutie's laws tonight, right, Brad?
Correct. We're hoping to change our line.
We're hoping that they'll change their name?
Yes.
What's it changed for the site plan?
It's an additional sign on the site plan.
What's additional?
No, I thought it was the same one just moved.
No, it's an additional sign.
Oh.
Yep.
But do you think we allow it, one wall sign?
That's right.
Yeah, so there would actually be three variances required for this sign. One for climate, one for location, and one for area. So we're, we're looking at other options.
Okay, get the stamp now.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay. So we have now, did you get something new from Mr. Frank?
Yes.
For 212? Why don't you come up here?
I'm sorry, this wasn't in your packet. This is what we discussed last meeting. With the.
And this is what you sent me, that I sent to, I spoke to George about, right?
Yes.
And Chase?
Nope. So now the village board would like an official recommendation.
Yes.
Simple solution, I'd like to spec, elegant.
It does two things. The first thing it does is remove that section from the cross-reference.
Right.
Section, and the second thing it does is add a line to the beginning of the district regulations saying, even permitted uses. I'll be a site planer again.
Okay, is there anything that anybody needs from George or Brad?
No, I think, I, it looks good for my land stand, I understand.
Yeah, I think it's fine. Takes care of the problem. This gives you everything, that's what you want to imagine.
Yeah.
We want everything, and now.
If not sooner.
Try?
Oh, is this, Liz?
I like it.
We're trying to make things straightforward.
Yes, great.
Did you, if you get a chance, you should read Dilbert today, which applies to a lot of these things. I think you get a kick out of it.
Home is always dirty. Okay, we have a motion to recommend to the village board that the change as submitted by the youth attorney should be adopted.
So moved.
A doctor and advocate. Yeah, whatever. Second, Liz, thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Do you want me to write that off?
Write it up, the recommendation?
Yes.
Sure, or?
Okay, one of them, yeah, great, yeah. Okay, excellent.
I mean, all, all I think we need is to have that in the minutes, right? And that'll be, yeah.
Okay.
And then you have this, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. So, okay, thank you, Brad. And can you tell us why you're here? There was a village board meeting last week, that's when, during which there was some, some heat and not much light, I'd say. Anyhow, there were a couple of things discussed. One was about the local law change for calling everything the scheduled.
Site one.
Type one, yeah.
Okay.
Oh, secret.
Yeah. And the public hearing was continued to next village board meeting, which would be in two weeks.
I believe the public hearing was.
Oh, it was, it was three?
Yeah, it was September.
Right.
The first weekend of September, because.
Yeah, so.
September wasn't really back, or something like that, yeah.
I'm not sure they're gonna perform on that meeting.
Yeah. So, yeah. So it was an interesting discussion. Most of the people complaining about it were, I guess, known as landowners who might be affected by it. It's weird sense.
Well, I should have complained.
I remember that.
And I complained based on the fact that we would have had to have lived with that map, as if that map was law, which is what.
That's obvious enough.
Yeah, that was a lousy map. It's a map that was drawn up to give a perspective of what Sonya thinks the web manager should be.
Right.
It wasn't reviewed by our engineers, the village, or planning board.
Was adopted.
It wasn't, it's, it was not a good map to make as part of the law. And for us as planning board members to have to use that as one of the tools, it's kind of insulting.
Would be terrible.
It was terrible. And I put it up as such. And this is very nice.
Is that how you, yeah?
But that was, that was my point, and a lot of people will point, you know, those fears to the type of one which is.
Yeah.
Hey, I got web names, I got news for you, you can do what I want.
I, I think that that would be the outcome anyhow, regardless of what.
Right.
The law says. And we, we and the county planning board had similar complaints about its knee, what is the need for it, and the way it was written, but.
I mean, if we need to expand, the state federal has already mapped, okay. But I want to create, I could just take that map and say, okay, what's wrong with this? That's where you go on.
Well, we'll see how the public hearing ends, and I guess we don't get to say anything more about it since we already had our.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah, yeah, I think we'll, we'll reserve that option, sure. Okay, and was there anything else? There were three?
Well, the interesting one, there's a movement on now to put toilets on your front lawn and make planters afterward.
No, no. No, no, okay, so actually, it's, it's a compo shit.
Well, that's what they're for. But that's how silly it got.
I know, I know, it's very silly. Some of them are more silly than us. They're trying to out-silly each other.
Yep.
Okay, so, so that was the, that was it. Okay, so I think we're done with our substitute village board liaison report from, thank you very much, I'll tell Tom.
You're welcome.
Okay, so we have planning board meeting minutes for August 5th, which is draft to be adopted. Do we have any, any corrections or additions? Liz has lots of marks on it.
No, no, this is something else. Notes to myself.
Notes to myself.
It should be.
There you go. John?
No, let's complete it.
Okay. Hearing no vitriol, I ask for a motion to approve.
So moved.
Thank you, John. Second?
Second.
Thank you. Liz, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, you know, I was gonna just speak about this with you, Liz. You probably haven't seen your, either yet, but I just put that in the list.
About Berkeley?
Yeah, this is how Berkeley does the neighborhood modification thing. And I thought it swelled. Well, it's a, it's a, it's a big, big board, it's, this is, I was standing when I took the picture, it's probably, it's probably six feet high. And it's staked to the ground, and I think it's just swell.
This goes on the property?
Yes.
Yeah.
It, well, this is a corner lot, so there were two. And we, we have some, some wording in the, Brad, you can, you can give those to the building inspectors and Holly and whoever.
Okay.
Whoever else wants it. And maybe put one in Michael's box, please. Thank you.
Oh. So they put it as part of, of, right on the front lawn?
Right on the front lawn, yes.
With everything?
Yes. So, now, it isn't everything, but it's much better than a pink piece of paper that says.
We're thinking about doing something here, right? We're not gonna tell you what, but we're thinking about doing something here.
So, I mean, not that I would, I would just like you to look at it, think about it, and then the next meeting, because we decided we'd like to ask our building department to go in that direction.
It's not a bad idea.
Doesn't have a date on it.
It doesn't have a date on it?
What the meeting might be.
It's not a bad idea.
You can read that?
I can.
Wow. It doesn't have a date on it. I think we should cite that.
It does give a website, though.
And a phone number.
And a phone number, yeah. Now, I haven't spoken with them, I tried calling them.
Tried calling this number, and what's her号码?
I tried calling Berkeley, yeah, and I left a message, and they didn't come back, I think, so I need four or five, I said.
What the?
But I wanted to see who pays for this. I'm assuming the applicant pays for it, both the making the drawings, or making the thing, but perhaps they do it, and they charge them for it, I don't know. But I would like to find that out, so I will do that.
Would you size what goes on there? The planning board, you have to size how much. Richard size, what goes on there? The planning board, he has to size how much information to put on there?
I haven't actually, I don't know.
And does anybody have any of that website?
No, this is a website for the, um, for the city.
Oh.
It's just the planning department's website.
Oh, so it's not necessarily going to be on that website?
Um...
You thought it would have all the time to...
Yes, well, you know, and I'm still, uh, thinking about it, we've been threatening to have an in-house web people person, and I think they might have been hired.
Yes.
But I haven't seen any, any results of, uh, of that.
I would say we're working on it. I, I get emails and having conversations about what needs to be on each page and such. So we would welcome your, your thoughts on that.
I, I have a lot of thoughts about it. I spent a lot of time developing my version of what I wanted the planning board website to look like, and I think, uh, I think I want to go towards full availability on the web of every document that we get for an application, so that people can get, without having to foil, without having to even know what to foil. It's all just there, and they can look at it anytime they want, and, and I don't have to go into the office and pay 25 cents a copy, or whatever it is, wait a week, or anything like that, so, that's what I'm thinking. Okay, um, may I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Thank you, Rich. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
We are in favor. Let me know when the calendar's off. Okay.